Good afternoon. I am calling the meeting back to order for matters by the public. And we are going to begin calling out the names for people who have submitted a card. We will ask that everybody who wants to speak submits a card. And this is going to be the final call for cards. So if we do not have your card within the next five minutes, that's going to be the end of the people that will be recognized for matters by the public. Commissioner Bernard has the cards. He will call out two names for the person that's going to speak and the person on deck. I ask the person that's on deck to be prepared to enter the chamber as soon as the person ahead of them has spoken, so we can move right along. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I'm asking everybody who speaks before us to please be civil. We are here to hear your thoughts and your comments, but we ask you not to make any comments with respect to anything except the subject matter of the matters before this body. With that being said, Commissioner Bernard, would you please call the first two names?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The first person will be Talita, followed by Karen Holm, followed by Jean Marie Nacer. The first one is going to be Talita.
We can't hear outside. There's no audio.
All right. Take him.
Yeah, there's no audio. We're not having a meeting out there. So we have my dear.
You are the third person up, Jean.
We didn't hear anything.
We'll take care of it.
We'll work that through for you.
The first person will be Talita, followed...
Okay. But we're not going to have conversation back and forth, okay?
Should I go get her?
All right. Who's the second one, Commissioner?
Karen Holm.
Is Karen Holm in this chamber?
They can't hear you calling them out there.
All right. Jean Marie, you are the third person in line. Why don't you come up and you'll be recognized to speak for three minutes.
Are the switches on over there?
Reset her time.
Mayor Kerner, a year ago, you beat me a gold star for sitting through the first reopening meeting with my N95 mask on for eight and a half hours and for holding you commissioners accountable for your public service duties. The irony is not lost on me. You better believe I am still holding you all accountable. I am holding you accountable for the last 10 months, no longer allowing us to comment on Dr. Alonso's presentations and the very data that affects our lives. I'm holding you commissioners accountable for ignoring CDC guidelines and violating your own mask mandate executive order at the Delray Beach Market on 424, as you were seen walking through the dining halls maskless and standing over food stations maskless. And Commissioner McKinley for violating the same executive order on March 26th, when you freely mingled and danced at a gala maskless. I'm holding you all accountable to CDC for turning CDC recommendations into mandates, yet choosing for yourself to ignore those same CDC recommendations. I am holding you accountable, Mayor Kerner, for not answering a single email of many emails this past year. And for those of you who want to bash the governor for scaling back your local government control, I have heard back directly from the governor to my personal cellphone three times this past year. That's three more times than I've heard from Mayor Kerner. I'm holding you all accountable for giving coercive health advice without healthcare licenses. And specifically, if our rock star mayor got the vaccine, you all can get it. And I'm holding you accountable for giving incentives and gifts and prizes for an FDA unapproved emergency use authorization, still being studied for two years to come, vaccine. A year ago, I presented to you CDC data on cigarette smoking deaths. And today, CDC data shows smoking has caused more deaths per year than COVID-19. Check the CDC. Ironic how you allow one to freely exhale toxic cigarette smoke in the air, but not to freely inhale fresh air and freely exhale one's own breath. If you county commissioners can choose when you see fit and comfortable to ignore CDC recommendations for yourselves, then so should everyone else be afforded that autonomy over our own healthcare decisions. I can respect someone owning up to a mistake, but your actions make it hard... Hello? Your actions make it hard to look past the double standards. You will always be accountable to me and those you serve, and that seems to have been lost on you. And I have concerns with Ann Gannon requiring employees to receive this FDA unapproved emergency use-only COVID-19 vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fussies!
Let's keep order, please.
The next person will be Talita, followed by Karen Holm, followed by Ann Margot Cannon.
You are recognized for three minutes.
Okay, so here we are, a year later, and...
Can you turn that up? We can't hear her.
She has to get a little closer to the mic. Let's... Excuse me. This is not a conversation. Please just speak into the microphone. And would you identify yourself just for the record?
Well, can we just get the time right then?
Restart her.
Thank you. Talita, that's my name.
Identify yourself, please.
I did. Talita. You know me. So, um, here we are, a year later, and it's surprising that what I've learned in the last live, I heard McKinley say that she was going to a funeral, and it was someone who had already been vaccinated, and apparently it's someone that you all know. So that person was vaccinated and still got COVID and died, right? So then she started warming up to the idea that maybe you guys should start loosening restrictions, right? And so, you know, Virginia Baker County Administrator, which no one elected here, finds it appropriate to make sure that people show their exemptions upon entering a business. And then you, Commissioner Weinroth, wanted to check our fecal samples in our sewer and, you know, all these things. And then, you know, my commissioner here in District 7, Mac Bernard, allowed Black Lives Matter to come in here storming with posters and, you know, and then you guys let them speak forever, how long and whatnot. And Commissioner Weiss, you said that in the emails that we had to get a public request form, you said that the masks are not going to go away until the... until everyone is vaccinated. And so I was kind of surprised with Sacks and Marino speaking up for the people last week. And I appreciate that, so I just wanted to say thank you for being a voice, for me at least. And I just want to give credit to our Florida Governor DeSantis for at least proving somewhat that he's kind of like not a rhino right now and that he's making things into place where you guys cannot make vaccine passports a thing. So I just wanted to remind you that the more that you guys stick to this sort of like thing, that you guys are... It's more of a reflection on yourself. And then even our attorney over there, she... I just want to address you specifically because the whole separate room thing, that's not legal. I'm sure of that. So you're... What? You have qualified immunity, and so because you're violating my constitutional rights, you're going to lose your qualified immunity, right? And so you want to continue to put these orders in, right? These policies or whatever little ego trips you guys have and not allow the rest of us who are maskless to come inside here? You guys are clowns. You guys are losing your minds completely. You're violating our constitutional rights.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next, we'll have Karen Holm, followed by Ann Margot Cannon, followed by Mike Bafumo.
Just for the record, there's a couple dozen people outside the door right over here who would like to come inside, but they're being told that they can't come inside because they do not have a mask to get into this room. They're in the other room. I'm here today because I'm really concerned about our children in Palm Beach County. While you are not the school board, you do affect what goes on in this county, and you are the voices for the people in this county. And I would hope that you're the voice for our children. So I'm going to read several comments to you exactly from our children regarding the masks. So, gosh, how many can I get in? Quote, "When I have trouble breathing in PE, I pulled my mask down for a second to get fresh air, and I get yelled at." That's a sixth grade boy in Palm Beach County. "I don't like to wear masks because I can't breathe in it, and when I try to, it burns my nose. I don't like it when others wear them because I want to see people's faces when I talk to them." And that's a third grader in Palm Beach County. "I don't like wearing masks. I know it's a rule, but I can't breathe so well, and it hurts behind my ears." That's a kindergartner. "Don't they care that I can't breathe with it on? I can't see anyone's faces, so I don't know if they're smiling or frowning at me, and that makes me sad." That's a fourth grader. "I hate PE now. It's too hot with the mask, and it makes me dizzy." Is anybody paying attention to this? Is anybody paying attention that these kids are told to keep the mask on even though they're trying to breathe? Do you get it?
Fussies!
They don't get mad while I'm reading it. "I keep getting a cyst on my nose." I would think that there'd be some doctor around here that would be talking about this. "I keep getting a cyst on my nose where the mask sits, and it really hurts, and it won't go away. It's hot. My face sweats a lot. It's hard to breathe. Hot air. Go figure." They didn't say that part. That's an eighth grader. "My glasses fog up. My face sweats, and my glasses slide down. The hot air makes it hard to breathe and cool off. I feel like I'm suffocating. It's hard to see my feet when I'm walking and not to trip up the steps." "I keep getting skin infections. It makes me hot and anxious, especially during a test." Hey, school board, are you listening to this when I do a test? Do you want your kids to pass that wonderful test that you want to give our kids all the time in order to, like, put a feather in your cap? I can only assume. "It's like 100 degrees outside, and it sticks to my face. I can't catch a fresh breath of air outside. Itchy, total distraction, hurts behind my ears. Can it be like the restaurants where you can sit and eat without a mask? Why do I need this on all day in school and in the hot bus?" That's from a sixth grader.
Thank you, Ms. Holm.
And that's all. I hope that you listen to our children in Palm Beach County and help make an influence of the school district in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next will be... Next will be Ann Margot Cannon, followed by Mac... Mike Bafumo, followed by Suzanne Riddescum.
Yes. I'm right here.
Please present yourself to the microphone, and you have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm hoping that you're listening, because I see people getting up and leaving while people are talking. I want to make sure that you all hear this. You are elected by we, the people. You do not supersede the governor of the state of Florida. The mass lockdown is over. I don't know if they came... Didn't come down and tell you, or you have your own ideas about what you want to do, but it's child abuse for the children. It's constitutionally offensive to me. It's a leash that you have to, like a rabid dog, like there's something wrong with you. You don't get to see people's smiles. You don't get to talk to people. It dehumanizes you. It's over. It's done. If you continue on the course that you're on, there is plenty of people that I know that are good and angry with you for your superseding of the governor, thinking that you're better than the governor. You're not better than the governor. We, the people, elected Governor Ron DeSantis by a majority vote, and you should go with what the governor says. And it was announced yesterday, and CBS 12 News didn't even play it on TV. I don't know what kind of game you're playing, but this is our country. We are Americans, and we will not be ruled by fascists. We will not be told what we have to do. My constitutional rights don't entail this thing being on my face anywhere that I go. Use common sense. You're an American, okay? You're intelligent enough to know when you're sick, stay home. Tell people, stay away from me. Put a mask on if you're sick. When you're not sick, why are you wearing it? Why? You need oxygen. You need to breathe. You need fresh air. My wife gets sick working for the Village of Wellington during the day, wearing the mask, breathing her own carbon dioxide all day. It is not healthy. It is not safe. It's more of a risk than COVID-19, which killed less than 1% of the population of the United States of America. Less than 1%. And we're doing this. It's ridiculous. It's atrocious. End it. Or don't show your faces in public anymore, because it's not going to be pretty. I'm telling you right now. People are sick of it. We're done being ruled by you. We're going to get rid of you, one way or another. We're going to get rid of you. You're not going to keep doing this. This is not going to continue. It will not stand. I took off of work today. I could have been making thousands of dollars today to be here, to say it to your face. So you all hear me. Hear me. Listen to me. Heed my words. Mark my words. End it now. Save yourself, because you're not going to be reelected again. You're going to get thrown out. Every one of you will get thrown out. I will make it my life's mission to make sure you don't work in Palm Beach County anymore again. I promise you, you will not work in Palm Beach County again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I please ask that the volume of the speakers be modified?
Hello, my name is...
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully request that you ask that the volume of the speakers be modified. They may speak respectfully, but not at such a volume that is...
Please...
That is...
Excuse me, please. We're not going to have conversations. We're having a conversation here. You'll be removed if you can't be quiet.
That is of such a high volume as to make it disrespectful and very difficult to listen to what they're saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You are recognized for three minutes.
Hold on. Let me call... One second. So we have Ann Margot Cannon, followed by Suzanne Riddescum.
Riddescum.
Oh, Riddescum, I'm sorry.
It's a hard name.
So Suzanne Riddescum, followed by Christopher Fay.
So I'm here today for the children, because that group is being most severely impacted by wearing these masks. You know, they're at a crucial stage when you're in first grade, second grade, going up through high school, even into college. These are very important times, but especially for the little children. They need more oxygen than we do. They need to recognize expression. They need to be able to interact with their fellow human beings. And I'm assuming many of you have interacted with either your own children or your grandchildren or your nieces or your nephews. And can you imagine just that mask over their face all day? And I took time today. I'm a therapist. I work with children. I work with families. I've done it for 19 years. And this is devastating, what's happening to the families. They're being torn apart by this. And children are going home, and they're crying. And they're being cut off from other children. And I just want to read a few things that some of these children have said today. "When I take a test, I get really hot and sweaty, and my heart beats fast, and I feel like I can't breathe even more." And that's Aiden, a third grader in Palm Beach County. "I need to see my teacher's face so I can understand what she's saying. I get frustrated that I can't watch her speak." That's Lily in first grade. And my sister-in-law, as an aside, has been a first-grade teacher in New York City for over 25 years. And she says, "It's outrageous. These kids are not making the yard marks they're supposed to make because they can't communicate. They can't see each other. They can't learn social cues. They can't share with one another." And everyone up there has to know this, because we do. You know, I am an aunt, you know? And I see what this is doing to the children and some of my clients. "It's weird that I can't understand anything the teacher is saying, but still have to learn it somehow. I can't understand my teacher when she talks to me, and it's annoying to keep it on." Ashley, incoming kindergartner. "I don't think I did as well as I should have on the FSA writing, because all I kept thinking about was how I couldn't breathe with my mask on, and I was afraid if I pulled it down to catch my breath, I would get in trouble." And that's Keaton, sixth grader in Palm Beach County. "I had to keep it on for FSA, and it was so hard. I was so nervous, and I felt like I was suffocating. I don't think I'm going to fourth grade, Mom. I'm sorry." And this is something that I hear from my sister-in-law, who came down to visit during her break. She said, "These kids are absolutely losing it because they need to interact." We're human beings. We like to touch. We need love. We need connection with one another. That's how we thrive. That's how we grow. That's how we love. So I'm just asking you to really consider what these children are saying.
Thank you very much for your comments.
So we have Ann Margot Cannon, followed by Christopher Fay, followed by Neil Bellinger.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Margot Cannon. I'm here to ask the county to make us feel safer regarding the proposed access for all mesh Wi-Fi network. There are many questions about the implementation details and, more importantly, the potential health effects on children. I have requested information from the school board, and I am still waiting. As you may know, the wireless technologies have come to market with no real safety testing for the general public or children. Currently, the standards are based only on adults and do not account for health. The current standard simply says it is safe as long as it doesn't cook tissue like a microwave. But emerging science is becoming clear that radio frequency, RF radiation, is potentially biologically harmful at very low levels, and children are especially vulnerable. This is... There is even a push to add this technology to the group of carcinogens. Note that this push is from health professionals. The Government Accountability Office issued a report which speaks about the RF radiation techniques now used by wireless companies. In this report, it says that further research was needed to characterize exposure to RF energy in juveniles, young children, and pregnant women. Further research was also needed for potential developmental and behavioral outcomes. Independent researchers from prestigious universities also say there are dangers of chronic exposure to certain types of wireless radiation. The NIH confirms that symptoms of retarded memory, learning, cognition, attention, and behavioral problems have been reported in numerous studies as a result of EMF and RF exposures. We cannot afford to be so focused on COVID-19 that we miss the effects of this type of exposure. Our children are counting on us to pay attention and ask questions. The FCC is now being sued by several groups for not addressing what has been proven scientifically harmful. The FCC will not protect our health. It is evident that we will have to do this ourselves. If everyone would just think for a moment of all the wireless devices in your house already, the Wi-Fi, the mobile phones, the cordless phones, the Bluetooth, there's already a huge amount of wireless in the average house, and now there may be a high-powered mesh Wi-Fi network in addition to all this, we will now be exposed to additional source of RF radiation 24/7, 365 days a year. A solution is out there. A lot of public servants in other cities are taking action. Many localities are investigating this and establishing safe technology limits, and that is the goal, establish safe limits and stick to them. We need to feel safe, and we need to know our children are safe. I will email as well as turn in today a sample resolution from the city of Coconut Creek, encouraging local delegations in Congress to support federal reviews into the health impacts of these emerging technologies.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
We have Christopher Fay, followed by Neil Bellinger, followed by Danielle Underwood. We have Christopher Fay, followed by Neil Bellinger, followed by Danielle Underwood, followed by Joey Soto. Mr. Vice Mayor, while we're waiting, we do have notice of default in dishonor constant judgment that I've received. If we can receive and file.
Receive and file without objection. Please give your name before you start.
My name is Danielle Thunderhawk. First of all, I wonder what Palm Beach County's return on investment is for human trafficking with the mask. That would be an interesting thing to study. But I've come here... Can you stop my time if there's...
We can hear her. Please, if you don't speak, you'll hear.
Can we restart my time?
Please, just keep going.
I've come here to speak to those of you who are still under the illusion that these people in front of me, or any other person for that matter, has authority over you. And also to speak for the people who still believe the lies the government promulgates. The only reason they act like tyrants is because people indulge the fantasy that they have authority over us. Indulgence in that fantasy is responsible for the pains of the past year and for the pains that our children will feel for decades, centuries to come. They have no more authority over you than I do. No more authority over you than any man has over you. A badge or a vote in a ballot box does not give these people magical powers that you and I don't possess. If you believe that we were ever in a pandemic despite your eyes, ears, brain, heart, and instinct telling you otherwise, you are choosing to believe a mass murdering government over yourself. A government that cares so much about social gatherings that it bombs weddings in Afghanistan. A government that tells you to mask your 13-year-old while shooting another 13-year-old in the street. This was never a pandemic. This is far worse. If you believe these people care about you, I urge you to look up the following: Tuskegee Experiments, the MOVE bombing in Philadelphia, the Dakota 38, Ruby Ridge, Waco, Wounded Knee 1894, and 1973, and the Black Wall Street massacre, the 100th anniversary, which is this month. Last time I was here, I spoke how we need to unify against these purveyors of hate. There is no left or right. There is only freedom and enslavement. These people consider all of us property. Our unification against them is the only chance our children have for survival. I'll end with a quote from Lysander Spooner. "A man is no less a slave because he is allowed to choose a new master once in a term of years." Revolution is not a one-time event. Refuse, resist, rebel, revolt.
Thank you for your comments.
That was Danielle Thunderhawk, not Danielle Underwood, so... So Christopher Fay, Neil Bellinger. So Christopher Fay, Neil Bellinger.
Mr. Bellinger, please come up and you have three minutes to present your comments. All right, after you speak, you can give it to the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I promise one thing, I'll be civil. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you? Thank you.
My name is Neil Bellinger, Director in Operations for Shop and for Soldiers and Needs for our Troops. That's not why I'm here today. We have an initial overview for a new company that we're opening up called Environmental Solutions. To give a brief detail of what we do, a person or group who deeply cares about the environment. Could I have a show of hands who really cares about the environment? Okay. The mission statement is to reduce the amount of styrofoam and styrene products used in facilities like cities, hospitals, rehabilitation centers, nursing homes, hotels, restaurants, as well as other places that are using styrofoam and styrene to an excess. In conjunction, we will provide environmentally friendly chemicals manufactured in America by a large national company called Zep Chemical out of Atlanta, my home, I know the founder. Also Enafil, who is a leader in the country for specialty paper products, that we hope to replace the styrofoam and styrene products with these amazing new paper products. Short story. Last November, I had a stroke. I was in two hospitals and three physical rehab centers and saw firsthand the tremendous amount of styrofoam cups, styrene products, and bad chemicals that they were using at these facilities. I did a little bit of math while I was there. 316-ounce styrofoam cups a day. Now, if you figure that out, it's 18,000 a month. Then you go by the year, it's 216,000, and they're not recycling. The question today is, will this company fit the criteria for the CARES Act funding? Is that a question for this meeting or not?
Not.
Okay, fine. In lieu of a mandate, could the county provide a proclamation stating very simply, whereas on this date, TBA circa 2021, the county will support every effort to reduce the amount of styrofoam and styrene products. Also, whereas Palm Beach County will make an effort for all facilities to use environmentally friendly products. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today and look forward to working with all of you on this project.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We have Danielle Underwood, followed by Joey Soto, followed by Grace Greenberg.
Can you please identify yourself? You have three minutes.
My name is Danielle Underwood. And before my clock starts ticking, if I can have everybody's attention, including this lady right here who's ignored everybody today, so I'm just gonna wait until everybody's got their eyes on me and is listening to me before my three-minute speech starts.
Your three minutes start now.
All right. Ms. Maria, could you please, you know, open your ears and your eyes and look at me a little bit? Good afternoon, board. New face, new blood here to the BOCC meetings. Never met any of you, never spent any of these meetings, I've watched them on TV. While I've been watching these meetings, today I come here in person to address my concerns as I only get a limited time and I'm gonna try to get through this as quick as I can. So hypothetically speaking, if I or somebody I knew worked for the county and showed up to work wearing a Trump mask, or a DeSantis mask, or any political mask, in fact, I'd probably get spoken to and get pulled into my supervisor's office and get put under fire. Reason I'm here today is I was driving down the road the other day with my special needs child that has an opportunity to ride the Palm Tran connection bus and the driver was wearing a Black Lives Matter mask. And I double took to see if that's what was really on the driver's face. And it was, and the driver decided she was gonna take her time out to bang on the window and flick me off. Our tax-paying dollars pay for those Palm Tran connections to go to and from special needs schools such as my child's to take them home. That is not something my child nor any child should be subjected to. Number one is profanities. Number two is political masks such as Black Lives Matter. All lives matter. My kid's life matters. Everybody's lives matter. And all I see right now is her on her cell phone, her not paying attention. What are you guys doing? I mean, for real? These are our children. Which leads me to, maybe the bus driver shouldn't have even been masked? Because we don't have to wear these, we shouldn't be muzzled. You guys are muzzling everybody. It's time to end the muzzles. The governors told you to stop. McKinley, you're not paying attention at all? And you know what? 2022 is coming up. You're done. You're out. We're replacing you. You might want to just leave today, because we want you to. I mean, enough is enough with these masks. I see people looking at me now because I have to get a little bit loud and I have to get a little bit overwhelmed to get people to look at me. But otherwise, these two women over here haven't paid attention to not one person that's come up to this stand today. That's disrespectful. You're paid for by my tax dollars. You work for me and all the constituents in this room. So you better believe I will be on every street corner for people not to vote you back in. You all will not be back here. If I have to run myself for a district, I will run to make sure that you guys have no job or purpose on this board. Mayor Kerner, where are you? You're not even here.
On the beach without a mask.
We deserve you to be here. We paid for you to be here. You all need to be here and paying attention to everybody. Our children at school, like I said, I have a special needs daughter, has to play outside in 90-degree weather, can't breathe, can't take drinks when they want to take drinks, can't do anything because they're subjected to being muzzled. End it now.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We have Joey Soto, followed by Grace Greenberg, followed by Dagmar Ragon, followed by Rachel Ead.
Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Joey Soto. All politicians are crooks, right? That's what my mother taught me. That's what many people believe. I don't believe that. I organized with a group of people where I still hear that in the room. I believe that some of you, gosh, most of you got into this with good intentions. You wanted to help. You wanted to serve. Like, for maybe a doctor, a police officer, all careers that are very challenged with COVID. None of you are in an easy path. We get that. I have sympathy. But you got into this position to help the little people, right? Well, these kids are the literal little people. I don't have a child, but I'm here today because I have a heart. Do you all? I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Grace Greenberg, followed by Dagmar Ragon, followed by Rachel Ead, followed by Edward. I can't read it. Lives on Midtown in Palm Beach Gardens.
Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Grace Greenberg from Lake Worth.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
Thank you. Is that all right?
Yeah.
We, the people, have organized to inform you that we follow common law, natural law. We know to follow de jure process. We will follow with written documents. Any human being could not follow these mandates about masks, vaccines, and so on. I don't know what's behind you and your governing because you are human beings and I'm sure that you care, really did care when you came in. We're really surprised that you haven't fought for the rights of the people. We are on top of the organizational chart. We are the electorates. The commissioner, county commissioners are just below us. We tell you what we want and we care that you care about us, but for some reason, it's not being seen that you really think about what you're mandating us to do. You don't like to wear masks. We found pictures of you without wearing masks. So it's natural for us not to wear masks. You know all of this. You've heard it from several people. You knew this before we even walked in. All I'm asking for is, please, follow natural law. We have rights to breathe. We have rights to be safe and considerate of others. That's all we want to be, safe and considerate of every, do no harm. That's what I think you're doing right now, and I don't think you came into office with that in mind. Whatever is behind our government, we need to nip it now, and you're the ones that can do it. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them.
We have Dagmar Ragon, followed by Rachel Ead, followed by Edward.
Hello, my name is Dagmar Ragoni, and I'm here to file the petition, official petition that I will be leaving with you, to the Palm Beach County fascists, officially titled as commissioners. Fascist Dave Kerner, fascist Robert Wainreich, fascist Maria Marino, fascist Greg Weiss, fascist Maria Sacks, fascist Melissa McKinley, fascist McBernard. Since all of you fascists that committed crimes against humanity for the last 14 months and you will be arrested and executed by our US military, tariff or I petition, you immediately stop releasing your personal colonic gas exchanges in our chairs, commonly known as farts. Those chairs belong to us. You're gonna be replaced very soon by new public servants that we will elect. I want to pass all those chairs as least contaminated by your fascist bodies as possible to the next public servants that will serve us. Especially you, Dave Kerner. And you know why? Holocaust mascless. Are you kidding me? I think you forgot the whole Holocaust and fascism. How did this end for Germans? Nuremberg Trial, does it ring the bell? Because you are gonna be in Nuremberg Trial 2.0. We can't wait to see you hanging, talking about women, and we cannot wait to see you men in front of firing squad because you know the EO order that came out a couple years ago. You know very well that you are part of those 280,000 SEAL indictments, and we do too. We will be throwing end of fascism celebrating parties on your graves. Everything you possess will be seized by the government. You're not gonna pass nothing to your families. Prepare them, Melissa. Prepare them, Maria Sacks, you are so bored. You're not gonna be leaving nothing. And on those graves, we're gonna be having a paris. I will be throwing them myself. You owe us apology, but that will not be enough. You still gonna go to Nuremberg Trial and we gonna be super happy.
Your three minutes are over. Thank you very much for your comments.
See you executed. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, you are recognized.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the other colleagues feel the same way I do, but I personally...
Commissioner, I found the comments to be offensive, but I felt that it was...
Fascism is offensive. You are offensive to us.
Would you please remove her?
Yes, you're right. It is offensive.
Please remove her.
I will remove myself, thank you. But I will be dancing on your graves. And so will be a lot of people.
You have... Thank you very much for your comments.
You're making your offer of office.
Ms. Ead, you are recognized for three minutes.
Are you going to the segregation room first or are we going here?
I believe you are next. Is Rachel Ead next?
I don't know.
Rachel Ead is next.
Rachel. Um, all right. This board doesn't speak for all of Palm Beach County. You can barely speak for the 15 or 20 of us who are here because you don't listen. This board did not speak for children, not once in the last year. For a full year, you silenced mothers, fathers, guardians, child advocates, anyone who begged you to unmask their children when it was within your power. You allowed no conversation, continually passed the buck to the school board, and for that, today, we celebrate the loss of your power, although we see you trying to maintain it over this mask mandate. Today, we're actually gonna fight harder against private businesses, schools, and any one of you who want to keep masks on us or children here in this county. We see it as the last carrot you're dangling ahead of the emergency use of vaccines on our children. It's a hostage situation. Where are the speech pathologists, the audiologists, the mental health experts? Our most developmentally fragile population is children. Commissioner Weiss, how dare you declare a proclamation to speak up for children when you haven't listened to a single parent all year? Parents, this is the fight of your life. Here I have over 4,000 signatures of Palm Beach County parents who never want their children to wear a mask to be on public record. And further comments from children. "I don't even know who to invite to my birthday party. I don't know what any of the kids in my class look like because of masks." Bobby, a third grader in Palm Beach County. "My teachers and friends don't understand me with my mask on, so I just don't talk in school." Logan, three. "I don't know what anyone's face looks like. I've never even seen my teacher smile." Gunner, fourth grade. "It's hot and I'm so uncomfortable. I bring two masks a day, so that's a little better because I can change. And I wanted to show my friends that I lost my first tooth, and when I took off my mask, they didn't even know I had dimples." Nicholas, a first grader. "This mask makes me break out in acne and I'm so insecure." A 17-year-old, Grace. "I really forgot what my friends look like when they smile. I can't remember their expressions and that's so hard." Megan, 13. "It's hard to breathe and I hate that I can't see my friends' faces. I've never seen anyone's face except for my lunch buddy. Do you think we'll ever have normal school again? Mom, can I go back to school after the masks are gone?" Kindergartner, kept at home because of a mask mandate. When is the "I'm hard to breathe" narrative going to apply to children? It applied to you all morning as it dangled by your ear. It applied to Ms. Sacks as she takes snacks, whatever. It applies to each of you when you need to speak or breathe. But these children don't matter to you. They matter to us. These are for public records.
Thank you. You can give that to the staff and they will put them in the record. Commissioner Bernard, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have three public speaking cards in the atrium, so I will call them. The first one will be Fane Loesman, followed by Melissa Mart, followed by Cindy Falco DeCorado.
Fane, are you the persons at the microphone there?
Yes.
Very good. Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Sure, Fane Loesman. I'm going to go with the mask. But we need to stay with the doctor. The recommendation I had this group here was when waiting for the vaccines, I mean, putting it back, I got my vaccine card, there's a substantial number of residents vaccinated in Palm Beach County. And I think with Vice Mayor, it's time to end the mask mandate. I believe the day county, with one or two criminal charges in the Constitution, that they're not gonna fight the governor, they're gonna go forward. So I think an easy way to get rid of the mask mandate, look at a certain percentage of vaccination and just call it a day. The sooner it's later, it has to end. And I think the time is either here now, like Bobby Day County, or it should be here very shortly, and I think you should schedule a special meeting to address the exit strategy. And the exit strategy is, is here now? The exit strategy is let's get back to the way things are. The number will be coming down and it will need to get off in our lives. So I think it was a good idea to do the mask game, I think it saved no one's lives. But now that we have the final answer with the vaccine process and the number will reflect that, Vice Mayor, we need to get back to the way things are. And you just can't get a lone wolf county out here saying we're not going to, we're gonna go forward. Because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we have to get back to the way things are. You have to say, you have to look at what your neighborhood county is doing, say, it's over. It worked out fine, but we gotta move on. So that's why I came here. I mean, I think the mask people are kind of holding, it's gonna be so much mask in the building and into the microphone. Okay? I kind of... Okay, I kind of wish for this movement, as I said, with all the public safety. Now that the safety issues have been pretty much addressed, I agree with them. That we need to move on and not damage the, I like many of you, as I like, there's only a great job, but I think the longer this drag drags out, if it were to affect some of you who are, I'd like to see you all staying on this chart. I think you're in a difficult situation. I think in the next few days, you can see whether county, if you have my suggestion, to have a special meeting next week to come up with a definitive, drop dead date with the mask mandate when you live in Long Beach County. I yield, we may go on to our next.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Melissa Martz, followed by Cindy Falco De Corado.
Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Oh, it's very wet, the microphone. My name is Melissa Martz. I'm so happy to be here today to exercise my First Amendment right before you and to speak on behalf of our children in Palm Beach County. I am a child advocate and I am going to continue with the testimony of the children from this county as it relates to mask wearing. It makes me not happy because it's wet all the time and my used air can't get out. Kingston, first grader. I don't like that I have to wear it all day during computers, during recess, during PE and all day. One thing I do like is that I can take it off to eat my lunch. Nicoletta, kindergarten, six years old. It's really hard to play outside with masks on. It's really hard to breathe when it's hot outside. The masks are itchy and by the end of the day, it's really smelly. I'm afraid to take my mask off because I don't want to get in trouble. Sebastian spends 10 hours at Palm Beach County School. It's harder to breathe walking between classes and also outside because of the heat. When I'm trying to sing or perform in front of class, you need to take deep breaths, but you can't. Sixth grader, Palm Beach County. Fourth grader, I wear this all day and my face has bumps. Julia. It gives me headaches. Colin, first grader. I don't like to wear the mask because I have a tough time breathing when it's over my mouth and nose. When it's over my mouth and my nose. Joe, sixth grader. I definitely have shortness of breath, having to wear the mask all day and I struggle to do so. Student, Palm Beach County. Rubbing behind my ears, trouble breathing while playing sports, like kickball and soccer. When I drink water, water stays on the mask and it gets really wet and soaked and it gets very annoying and flimsy. Fifth grader. I can't breathe, exclamation point. And when it touches my chin, I feel like I'm suffocating. Also, I can't hear anything anyone says. Erica, 11th grader. Mommy, I can't breathe and when I tell, they don't care. They make me put it back on. They don't care, a lot like the board here today. Mommy, I feel funny sometimes because I can't breathe. Why? Kendall, first grader. Mommy, my breathing sometimes feels like I need to go into the hospital when I wear my mask. And when I take it off to breathe or sip my water, Ms. M says to put my mask on. It hurts my ears. Kindergartner. It gets hard to breathe when we're running outside for recess and it's hard for people to hear me. Summer, third grader. I don't like that I'm not allowed to laugh, smile, or make new friends. All of the adults at school look so mad at me all the time. Alexandra, kindergartner. I don't like to wear it all day, it's hard to breathe and I can't see my friends' smile. It makes me sad. Leland, first grader. When will it end? I want to go back to Miss Brook's school. And then lots of tears. Myla. There's a scripture that says to speak up for those that cannot speak for themselves. Thank you, God, for the opportunity to do that today.
Thank you for your comments. As a courtesy, I'm gonna ask people to put their masks on, as a courtesy. To everybody that you're sitting around. Next person, please.
We have Cindy Falco De Corado, followed by, hold on. Edward Dewezear, and followed by, okay, followed by Angelique Contreras.
So, good afternoon. Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. I would first start, I know you heard about the Nuremberg.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Cindy Falco De Corado. I would like to read to you the Nuremberg Code. By authority of the Nuremberg Code on Medical Experimentation, I do hereby exercise my right to refuse, to submit to, or to administer the COVID-19 vaccine. The United States government has persecuted, convicted, and executed medical doctors who have violated the Nuremberg Code on Medical Experimentation. Aiders and abaters of Nuremberg crimes are equally guilty and have also been prosecuted, convicted, and executed. I come here today to tell you that your governor, my governor, has already stayed a stipulation that the mask mandates are null and void as of yesterday at 4 o'clock PM. Why that wasn't honored here today, I do not know. What that shows me is that each and every one of you are under insubordination, that you don't even listen to your authority. And yet you want us to listen to you as the authority. I have a picture here of our great governor, pardon, mayor, excuse me, sitting here with a cigarette in his hand, looks like he's stoned out of his mind drunk, and he's telling us about our health. People, wake up. This man is smoking. Everybody knows that cigarettes gives you cancer. And he's telling you, you have to wear a mask? Are we nuts? Why would you even listen to such a person? I just want you to know that. You need to know back there, people in your homes, they don't care about your health. You have to care about your health. Your governor wrote a document yesterday, signed and sealed, no more masks. Be free, take them off, and breathe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Edward, followed by Angelique Contreras, followed by Drew Martin.
Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
My name is Ed Dolazal. I am reading a notice of default and dishonor consent to judgment. And it's addressed to all of the commissioners, as well as to the county administrator. Statement of facts, on March 9, 2021, around about 2:00 PM, I presented affidavit on the record directly to the Palm Beach County Board that official notification outlined the violations based on the foregoing facts and you are now in default. The respondents provided no rebuttal to the complaint. Respondents provided no physical response. The respondents failed to provide any response to the mask mandate and the unlawful lockdown. The respondents have defaulted. The respondents continue to lie to the people at large via the mainstream media about the number of deaths strictly from COVID-19 according to the CDC website. As an operation of law, the respondents by dishonor of the presentment and the affidavit have created a default. For the respondent's failure to honor the presentant and affidavit places respondents in default for the course of dealing set forth herein with the respondent's failure, refusal, or neglect in the presentment of a verified response to the presentment and affidavit constitutes respondent's failure to perform in good faith and respondent's acquiescence and tacit agreement with all terms, conditions, and stipulations set forth within this notice of default and dishonor. As a power of attorney, I wish the following. Cease and desist on all unlawful activities. All of the people at large of Palm Beach County be made whole. Remove lockdowns and unlawful mask mandates from private businesses. Reparations paid to the people at large and the private businesses for the violation of unalienable rights. So you have three business days to comply. There are a number of affidavits that are listed here. I'll let you read it in due course, but I want to skip to number 26, which you may not be familiar with and I think is very important. Number 26. Any public servant who breaches their oath of office are no longer operating in the public capacity. And are upon the instant of their breaching their oaths, operating instead in their private capacity. Mrs. Sacks, I'd like to have you look at this, right? Thank you. Therefore, all public servants who have committed any crimes against me and all of their superiors on the chain of command bear full commercial liability in their private capacity for any and all damages whenever they are acting in breach of their oath of office. This has been submitted as part of the public record. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have Angelique Contreras, followed by Drew Martin, followed by Delroy Low.
Please identify yourself for the record and you have three minutes.
Hello, Board. My name is Angelique Contreras. I'm here to address this board because I think as constituents of yours, we have that every right to do that. It's unfortunate that when a group of people got here today, we were denied entrance into this room. Many of us, such as myself, and I've said this on the record multiple times, have a religious exemption. And I don't think I should be denied just because I am medically unable to wear a mask to come in this chambers and address you personally. Your powers, Virginia Baker, as an employee of the county, do not supersede the governor of our state. This entire board has been complete, and don't take this the wrong way or do, hypocrites of this mask mandate. I know each one of you, just as ourselves, want to enjoy our lives with our family and our friends without ridicule. But as you know, for months, we have been ridiculed because we refuse to comply with your demands. Melissa McKinley, you enjoyed a gala without a mask on. And the other commissioner stated on the microphone, don't let other people know. It wasn't a mistake that you were without a mask. I enjoy pizza too, Mac Bernard, Weinroth. Maria Sacks, who hasn't looked at one constituent's eyes the entire time we have been here. What a disrespect to Palm Beach County residents. Kerner is not here today, which, he's my favorite person and I'm sad that I don't get to look him in the eyes while I show this picture of him.
I thought I was your favorite.
Oh, Mac Bernard. This, this here, this Make It Better. So here you are enjoying pizza, just as all of us want to enjoy our lives, yet we are still controlled by this board. We do not want to get anybody sick. We are not trying to harm anyone. We are trying to do what is best for our family. That's all we want. We want freedom to choose. We do not want to be controlled by government. We do not want you to continue your power trip, which you have done for the past 14 months. If you get to live your life, we get to live our life as well without ridicule. You want respect. The only way respect is given is when it's earned. And nobody on this board has earned the respect of the constituents here in Palm Beach County. I have seven seconds left. Maria Sacks, I pray you find some oomph in yourself because it seems that you don't have it to look people in the eye when they talk to this board.
Thank you, Ms. Contreras. Next speaker, please.
We have Drew Martin, followed by Delroy Low, followed by Sherri Ackerly.
Mr. Martin, please put your name on the record and then you have three minutes.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club. And I'm actually here, can you hear me or do I need to take my mic? Seems that other people want to tell me what to do. You know, that's kind of interesting. They come here and complain that they, they, well.
Please be courteous to the speaker.
Anyway, I'm not here to speak about COVID. I'm here to speak about the environment and we're here to speak about the Lakshati Wild and Scenic River. And one of the issues that was brought up when we were discussing the Scripps funding, which the Sierra Club doesn't have a position on that, but I personally think that the county should not move forward with that. It's that why we sued to protect Mecca, the Mecca site. And we sued to protect the Mecca site because of the Lakshati Wild and Scenic River. And that is to be the headwaters for the Wild and Scenic River. And we understand that there were some concerns about the size of a reservoir on that site. But we still believe that there could be something on that site to store water to assist the city of West Palm to have enough water during dry periods. And that water would then flow through grassy waters and through the Aventura site in Palm Beach Gardens and then go to the headwaters of the Lakshati Wild and Scenic River, providing it with adequate minimum flows and levels. So that's why we did that lawsuit, which we won. We are concerned, however, about the continuing issues with the trees. Now, I have some speakers who are available to speak in July. And the mayor's not here and I noticed Ms. Baker just left. But the question I have is to set that up, how should we proceed? Commissioner McKinley had suggested that we do that, so now we're ready to proceed in July. Do we contact the scheduler? Do we contact the mayor? How should we move forward on that? I'm sorry. Patrick? So we should work with Patrick? Okay. All right. So we'll work with Patrick to move forward on that. I've been talking with both the Native Plant Society and the Audubon Society of the Everglades to protect the trees because we want to see the native trees that are standing maintained because we think for health reasons, they're beneficial. And we're particularly concerned about a number of HOAs that are removing those trees. So we want to find a way so the county can enforce the permitting requirements and replacement requirements on the removal of native trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next.
We have Delroy Low, followed by Sherri Ackerly, followed by Suzanne Kadish.
Please identify yourself for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Delroy Low. Commissioners, greet you this afternoon.
Just get a little closer to the microphone.
Commissions, I greet you this afternoon. I am here because of problems with code enforcement, which is, it starts that way because of neighbors. And that's something that keeps happening to me, which seems to reoccur every six months. Recently, I was given another violation. I sent each of you a letter explaining that in details because I can't do that today. The present one is where a person is trying to take five feet of my property, which goes up, it's 750 foot square feet. I had a survey done, that person did not. It took them four months, 14 months to get that done. And now it's down to 18 feet, 18 inches. And code enforcement want me to move my post from where it is, from where I had my stuff done. One of the confusions I have when I get the information from code enforcement is that it's very generic, the information that's in there. And stuff that are written in there is not on my property. It is in fact on the next door neighbor property, which are making the complaints. So that needs to be addressed with them to get that done. I request last week, I request information for the pictures that were taken so I can properly address the violations they are talking about. Since 2014, my place has been vandalized over and over and over again. And I always have to be complaining because code enforcement comes and give me this and then I have to do that. I just need to be able to do this. The stuff that I'm being asked to do now, I have 10 days left and I haven't gotten the pictures that I need to properly address it because of the information that's written in the stuff that I get is very difficult to understand. I asked one question about the post line that's there. I had to do it three times before I got an answer. And I had to invoke commissioners in order for that to be responded to me. I need help in getting my property fixed up. I'm not looking for a handout. If there's some program within the county that can lend me money to do it and I will pay it back to get my face into proper condition, I would like to have that done. On another note, this is not concerning me. This is concerning another citizen where she hasn't been able to pay her mortgage for over 10 months as of January. So she need, I need a contact to give to her so she can get some help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Baker, can you have staff reach out to this gentleman? Thank you.
The next person will be Sherri Ackerly, followed by Suzanne Kadeish, followed by Anna Bedencourt.
Hi, my name is Sherri Ackerly, first time Speaker. I want to thank you all. I know it must not be easy to listen to a bunch of people that are really angry at you, especially when you don't show due respect and courtesy. You can't expect it in return. I want to say that I came here to speak on, and quote, "Some of the children from Palm Beach County", which you've heard from. But first, I'd like to ask, quoting from some of your own words just yesterday, about this emergency order that's been lifted and that we are now free. And where you have stated, I believe, Ms. Baker, that you would follow the Governor's lead, and then went back and said you were going to protect your most valued asset, which were government employees, not the citizens that voted for you. Mm-hmm. I've got your attention. Thank you. Okay, that's pretty good. What I want to say is that you cannot usurp our Governor. We did vote you in. We'll vote you out. Ms. Marino, you, you had a tight race, and it was a gift that you were put into this office. And we have yet to hear anything from you supporting your constituents. I think it would be wise to start stepping up and get on the right side of this issue. Having said that, that goes to all of you. And most of you are the most rude people I've ever been in company of. You don't look. You gentlemen do, and I appreciate it. But when someone's speaking to you, I think all of us were taught to look at them and give them due courtesy. You're not going to receive courtesy unless you give it back, give it in return. This is from a third grader. "I'm scared to take my mask down when I need an air break because I'm afraid I'll get kicked out of school." A third grader. "My mask makes me feel so sick when I'm trying to listen really hard to my teacher. My belly starts to hurt, and I get scared that I'm going to throw up." A first grader. "My mommy," excuse me, "mommy, I'm scared to wear the mask because it causes me to have nosebleeds." A first grader. "I don't like wearing my mask because it's hard to breathe, and sometimes I get a headache." Now, we know that you all don't like wearing your mask because you're public figures, and you get caught all the time not wearing your mask. You, the day of "do as I say, not as I do" has come to an end. And again, I implore you all to get on the right side of this, because we have a population that is changing, and we are not going to be governed by those who will not follow their own rules and regulations. And that's what this has been for over a year. You have been making mandates, enforcing mandates, that you have no right. It's wrong. You know it's wrong. That's why you live differently. You don't live your own rules. You don't like your mask. You've been all pictured. All of you, if not, most of you, if not all of you. So it's time to stop. You've got to get on the right side of this. And sir, if you like wearing a mask, I say, you're nodding your head, I say, go for it. Enjoy it. Do whatever you want. Don't require me to. You don't have that right.
Thank you for your comments. I'm just going to make a quick comment that, please understand that this body has no authority over the school board. The school board will make a decision with respect to the students, and we cannot make any change to that policy. That will be a school board policy, and you should address your comments to that body. Mr. Commissioner Bernard, would you please?
Your mandates, your schools following.
There are new populations, children, don't follow.
We have Suzanne Kadeish, followed by Anna Bedencourt, followed by Sharon, Sharon Eaton.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Kadeish, and I'm a resident of Ancient Tree Community in Palm Beach Gardens off of Northlake Boulevard. I'm here today to implore you to have the Palm Beach County Engineering Department issue the above-ground permit for the traffic signal at the intersection of Bay Hill Drive, Ancient Tree, and Northlake Boulevard. There is an urgency to bring this project to completion. If you haven't utilized this intersection, and you're involved in voting for or against it, I ask that you take a ride there to experience it during peak hours. I strongly suggest that you do not bring any of your loved ones in the car with you as passengers. As a resident of Ancient Tree, I know firsthand how very frightening and dangerous it is to drive in that intersection. I do not want you to risk the lives or well-being of your loved ones if they're a passenger. Unfortunately, using the intersection isn't an option for residents who live there. We have to risk our safety daily to get to work, the grocery store, and live our lives. Back in 2019, Channel 12 News was out at that intersection. It's on the internet. I urge you to look at that video if you haven't seen it. There was also a meeting at a high school in, on March 15, 2019, where David Ricks, the Palm Beach County Engineer, said that the criteria wasn't met for the threshold to have a traffic light at Bay Hill and Northlake. He also said, quote, "That doesn't mean it won't be met in the future, but that's where we're today." Since I only have limited time, let's fast forward to today. With Ancient Tree being populated and the golf course now at that intersection, we have met the threshold. The town of Palm Beach Gardens did another study, has submitted the same, showing that the warrants needed to justify this traffic light have been met. All of the underground permits and work are completed. From the research I have done, we're governed by the MUTCD. This federal document is the national standard. It applies to all roads open to public travel. A warrant is a condition that must be met to justify the installation of a traffic signal. The manual makes it clear why these warrants are required. When I read through the information from Palm Beach Gardens, I see that they have applied for all required permits in accordance with all applicable rules, regulations, and procedures. The signal warrant compliance has been met, as illustrated by a study issued by a licensed professional traffic engineer. The funds have been set aside for years. The last step needed to proceed is for the county to issue this permit, so the work can be completed. From my viewpoint, I can see no valid reason for other, any further delay. If you can provide me with any information to support an opposing stance, I welcome that. Please tell me how and where we can be informed of the county's reason for delaying the safety of the residents and visitors to this extremely dangerous intersection. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Rutter, would you please take the information this woman, and so that we can have that reviewed? Thank you. Mr. Rutter, we'll see you on your way out. He's coming around.
We have Anna Bedencourt, followed by Sharon Eaton, followed by Linda Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Bedencourt, and I'm here today to echo in what Suzanne just said. I ask you, please, to consider the approval of the traffic signal at the intersection of Sun Hill Crane Golf Course, Ancient Tree, Bay Hill, and Northlake Boulevard. The city has long recognized this necessity. The legal warrant was already put into place. I'm a resident at Ancient Tree, and I witnessed every day the dangers of crossing, trying to reach the other side of Northlake, due to the high volume of cars and the high level of speed. I have witnessed lots of accidents around the Palm Beach County area, and I would not want you, please, to wait for more deaths, more people being injured because of crossing at this intersection. It's extremely, extremely dangerous. Today, I came here to beg you, please, to go ahead and do a great act of your responsibility as a public server, protecting our human lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Bernard, next.
We have Sharon Eaton, followed by Linda Smith, followed by Elizabeth Felton. We're going to go with Linda Smith, followed by Elizabeth Felton, followed by Samantha Arango.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Smith, and I live in Jupiter, Florida. I want to thank you for my mask. We did elect you to represent us locally, and thank you. I find some of the physical threats, frankly, quite scary. My grandkids seem to be fine, but that's not why I came. There are many issues I would like to discuss today that several other people are going to be discussing or have already discussed. They include reducing single-use plastic, slowing down development in the Palm Beach County Agricultural Reserve, and the removal of native trees and being replaced by exotic palms. We all saw the article in the Palm Beach Post regarding the agricultural reserve and the future developments. I also have concerns about past developments. Where do we stand on the Ski Lake issue in the Ag Reserve? Are we collecting those fines? Are they rectifying their code compliance issues? We all saw the article in the Palm Beach Post regarding the mahogany's at Tivoli Lakes, calling it a chainsaw massacre. Replacing native shade trees with exotic palm trees is not equal. We also need to be pushing for more electric vehicle charging stations throughout the county. These are necessary infrastructure improvements for our county to move forward. I understand the Palm Beach Office of Resilience and Palm Beach County Environmental Cross departmental team are in the early stages of assessing options for reducing single-use plastic at county operations. But they are not currently drafting a resolution, but continue to track what other municipalities are doing. Boynton is finishing up their ordinance. Boca is moving on their ordinance. And if it is the intent to have every municipality pass their own individual ordinance, and then the county passes a resolution for the unincorporated portions of Palm Beach County, let it be so, and let's move forward on that as an issue. We should be requiring hydration stations at county events, parks, beaches, and people will learn to bring their refillable bottles if they see these hydration stations. I have offered to volunteer my assistance in any way I can. I will be speaking with Representative Mass Office this week to discuss future congressional bills and working from the federal level, but I would also like help working from the local level up. Thank you for the Coast Resilience Partnership Workshop, which is going to be May 25, and the Compact Workshop on Social Equity on May 26. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner?
We have Elizabeth Felton, followed by Samantha Arango, followed by Richard Dolazol.
Greetings, and thank you for your service to our community. I heard somebody say that you have no authority.
Can I ask you just to identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Elizabeth Felton, as called.
Thank you.
I heard somebody say that you don't have any authority over the, the school district, but it would be silly to pretend you don't have any influence. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to continue reading from your youngest constituents. Thank you so much. Everything sucks about it. It's hard to concentrate and think in it. I can't look below my nose and clearly see my classwork, and it's hard to breathe in it, especially when I'm wearing it outside. Aiden in third grade says, "I feel like I'm suffocating, and if I pull my mask down to breathe, everyone yells at me." "I get so thirsty, but I'm afraid to drink my water because the teachers yell at us for keeping the mask down for too long. I hate them anyway, because I can't breathe during recess." That's Bella in third grade. "I can't breathe when I'm running outside. I can't breathe when I am running outside." "I feel like I can't breathe a mask, especially while in PE or recess. I get scared to take it off, because my teacher said I'll get COVID, and she tells me I need to keep it on at all times." That's Ryder, first grader in Palm Beach County. "I feel like I'm suffocating, and if I pull my mask down to breathe, everyone yells at me. The mask gives me headaches, and it is hard to breathe, and I can't understand my teacher. My teacher also takes points away if we don't wear it the way we're supposed to, and then we don't get a prize." That's Annabelle in kindergarten. "It's really hard to play outside with the masks on. It's really hard to breathe when it's hot outside. The masks are itchy, and by the end of the day, they're really smelly. I'm afraid to take my mask off because I don't want to get in trouble. It's hard to hear, and it gets hot. It wastes a lot of time during school when kids tell each other to pull their masks up." Kayla, fourth grade. "All I think is about, about is the masks all day, and making sure I have it on properly, because I don't want to get in trouble. I hate it. I can't breathe." Aiden, Palm Beach County. "It's hard to hear people and listen to what the teachers are saying at school, and I'm afraid to tell anyone. I am afraid to tell anyone. It's too hot and stuffy inside my mask. They're gross. They make me cough, but I'm afraid to cough because I don't want to get in trouble. I can't breathe well, and keeping it on so long gives me terrible headaches. If I pull it under my nose and breathe for a few minutes, my teachers let other students come up to me and pull the mask up on my face. I feel like something really bad is going to happen if I take it down, even for a second, and it makes me feel like I'm going to pass out." Mark, fourth grade. "I don't like wearing my mask all day at school because I can't breathe. My mom tells me I have to listen to my teachers, so I don't say anything. My PE teacher made us wear masks outside while running a mile. It was really hard for me to breathe them, but I kept it on so I didn't get in trouble."
Thank you very much for reading those comments. Can I just ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How were those comments collected?
These were collected by...
I'm at Palm Beach, a group online of parents that are fighting against diseases of children and support.
Thank you.
Together and gathered from the community. These are all from Palm Beach, Palm Beach kindergarten and high school.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for allowing us to share that with you.
We have Samantha Arango, followed by Richard Dolazol, followed by Sheila Calderon.
Hello, I'm Samantha Arango. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to express myself this afternoon. It feels good to stand you, to stand before you today. It feels like the right thing to do. And again, thank you for this opportunity. I am here today as a mother. Today, I'm speaking for my one-year-old son, Sagan, his rights, his own bodily autonomy. Children learn so many basic understandings of what it is to simply be human by discovering people's faces, especially at such an early age. Their subtle expressions of joy, sadness, anger, frustration, excitement, by seeing others' faces. They begin to understand their own emotions and how to properly express them. How many beautiful faces have you seen and felt something so unexplainably pure? For nothing is more pure than the face of a child. Covering the face of a child is inherently wrong, especially when there is significant scientific evidence proving that wearing a mask does not, does not prevent against the spread of this virus. The Wuhan coronavirus, also known as COVID-19, the virus is far too small. It has been expressed by doctors and scientists in relation to the size of a grain of sand passing through a chain-linked fence. Simone of America's front, Simone Gold of America's Frontline Doctors, a board-certified physician and respected lawyer. If this is the science and the truth, then why the mandates? I'm genuinely curious, but if there is no response, then I can only assume there are ulterior motives at work. Not to mention the significantly low numbers of children who survive the Wuhan coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. Let me kindly remind you of that number. It is 99.997 percent. I understand some of you, including some of the police officers outside of this room, are just following orders from your superiors. But what would your own mother say, seeing you here now? What would she say? That you are restricting the most basic of human rights of children, the right to breathe, as she birthed you in her own power, and you took your very first breath, that she's so lovingly gifted to you after carrying you for nine months in her womb? What would she say to you now? Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to give us your comments.
We have Richard Dolazol, followed by Sheila Calderon, followed by Daniel.
Come on forward. Please identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Calderon, and I have to say, this is the first time that I have been to the Commissioners since COVID. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm from Green Acres, and I'm going to be speaking about sugar burning. We have been suffering from a pandemic crisis for over a year. Many people from the Glades area have suffered from COVID, and to compound that disease, they have been confronted for months with the pollution from sugar burning. There have been some small strides made by the sugar industry. However, they still claim they caused no harm with this method of harvesting cane. It's outrageous that the industry continues to get financial benefits from our government while still continuing to affect the health of the residents in the surrounding areas. It's widely known that Australia, Brazil, other countries, and cities here in the United States have gone to green harvesting and no longer burn the cane. There's a bill sitting on our government. There's a bill sitting on our governor's desk right now, waiting to be signed. It's called SB 88, that will give protection from the impacts of burning, I'm sorry, that's going to take away protection from the impacts of burning sugar cane. Smoke and ash from sugar burning can extend for 27 miles, so the people living with that would be prevented in this bill to seek compensation should they develop health issues. Please, can't our county commissioners do more to bring an end to the burning of cane and have the industry go to green harvesting, where they will create additional income from the products that they develop when they don't burn the harvest? Thank you for your attention, and I appreciate the fact of being able to speak today.
Thank you very much for your comments. Commissioner?
We have Daniel, followed by Pat Walker. We have Pat Walker, followed by Brandy Anne.
Please identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Pat Walker, and I am here today, and you'll be happy to know my remarks will be very brief. I basically want to say that I'm here in support of, and that I agree entirely with the views that are expressed by Drew Martin and Sheila Calderon, that the environment in the state of Florida and in Palm Beach County is, my apologies to the people who believe the masks are the most important, I think the environment conditions are the most important thing that we have to worry about, that the water is rising, and the drought is coming, and we really need to put a lot of emphasis on taking care of these many environmental things that have been mentioned today. And I read recently in the paper, in particular, that they are considering, again, fighting over whether or not to use up part of the agricultural reserve for some development. No, we should not do that. That money was paid from taxpayer dollars to say that we would have in perpetuity, which I can barely say, always have this land as open land, agricultural land, whenever this comes up. Say no. It's against the, what we were promised. So having said all that, yay trees, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We have Brandy Anne. And so I'm going to call the last names that, the names, Christopher Fay, Sharon Eaton, Richard Dolazol, and Daniel.
You are recognized for three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Brandy. So, you know, we're here again. I don't really know why you guys act like you care about the people. I mean, you won't let us in the building, then you do. I mean, if you truly cared, why don't you ban glyphosate? Why don't you actually make the effort to respect people? I mean, I didn't really prepare a speech for today, but, you know, all this stuff that's going on with education and just in general, they're using our children right now for their metadata, and all data for everybody here, and giving it to Big Tech, so they can make ledgers for blockchain. I know you're not the school board, but you're the commissioners, and I know you know what blockchain is doing. I know you understand the plan that they're, that Big Tech has, but these are private corporations. We, they're not elected, nothing. So for them to just interfere in our education system is wrong, and for you guys to just keep putting these towers up is also wrong. For you to not allow people to come in and speak is also wrong. I just, I don't get it. It's like, people elect you to serve and protect people, but you guys don't do that. You don't give a shit about anything but yourself and your money and the private corporations that are paying you. And you just got to change that, because that's just, it's wrong. And you know what? I'll just read one quote, and then I'll leave. "If any man's money can be taken by a so-called government without his personal consent, all his other rights are taken with it. For his money, the government can and will hire soldiers to stand over him, compel him to submit its arbitrary will, and kill him if he resists." Lysander Spooner. That's how I feel this government is. You guys don't care about the people. You don't care about our health. You don't care about the environment. All you guys care about is the corporations that give you a paycheck. That's it, and I'm sick of it. Change.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Bernard, do we have any other speakers?
Mr. Vice Mayor, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call Daniel one more time. I was told that he left. And then Richard Dolazol, I was told that he also left, so we're going to cross that person, and then we're going to call Sharon Eaton and Christopher Fay one last time. If they haven't come up, then we're-
It looks to me like we have given everybody the opportunity to be, to be heard. With that, I'm going to-
We do have a couple non-speaking cards. Can we receive and file?
Yeah, we'll receive and file those, sure. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. We do appreciate you taking the time. This meeting is adjourned.